It's a marshmallow world in winter. When the snow comes to cover the ground. It's time for play. It's a whipped cream day. I wait for it to hold you around. Those are marshmallow clouds being friendly.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the December 10th, 2013 City Council meeting to order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco Hachkis, House.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse, White, Mayor Schneider.
Here. And I know Mr. Francisco should be joining us shortly. Item number one.
Employee recognition service award pins.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you know, every month we present award pins to service award pins to those employees who are celebrating important anniversaries with the city. And this month we have several, and I'd like to read their names into the record, and we don't have any that are here to receive pins. So first with five years, Mike Witbeck, who is an electronics communications technician in public works, and Nicholas Negro, who is a waterfront maintenance worker, two at the waterfront. With 10 years, Karen Gumtow, environmental services specialist, two in finance. With 15 years, Nina Johnson, Assistant to the City Administrator, Alec Hardy, Senior Network Applications Analyst in Administrative Services, John Ledbetter, Principal Planner in Community Development, Michael Brown, who's a police sergeant, Scott Clacking, police officer, Dave Harris, who's an automotive equipment technician in public works, and George Jimenez, who's a senior tree trimmer in Parks and Rec. With 20 years, Will Sandoval, who is an automotive equipment technician in public works, Al Lopez, who's water distribution operator, two in public works, and Herman Escalante, who's a treatment plant technician supervisor in public works. With 25 years, who's down below, Tony Ruggeri, who is our city TV production supervisor in the City Administrator's office. In 30 years, Jaime Lamone, Senior Planner, two in community development, Rick Marshall, Water Distribution Operator Technician, two in public works, and Ray Rosas, who's an administrative specialist at the airport.
Great, thank you, and congratulations all. Happy 25th, Tony, you're watching. Changes to the agenda, we'd like to move item number 19 to right after public comment, if we could do that. Any other changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So if we can go to public comment, I have two minutes here up at the dice. We'll start with Robert Burke, to be followed by Ethan Shankman.
Madam Chair, councilmembers. A fellow veteran is in jail because of a hit-and-run in alcohol. We want people to be held responsible for the consequences of their actions. Also, he came back to person we sent him away to protect us from. He is responsible for his actions as an individual. We, as a community, are responsible for putting him in harm's way, that changed his mind and not offering the services to him to repair that damage. This is my diagnosis for post-traumatic stress disorder. The first one is four pages long, the second one is three pages long. Twenty-two veterans and active-duty personnel suicide a day. The veteran suicide hotline receives 1,500 calls a day. This is a wealthy country on an abundant planet. The lower taxes mantra, government is evil aphorism, and the austerity budget policy is a poverty consciousness based upon fear. Fear is an unacceptable basis upon which to form personal or public policy. Placing money, concrete buildings, and asphalt roads as more important than people, housing, and social services is too high of a price to pay. The purpose of therapy for post-traumatic stress disorder people is to make the person larger than the symptoms and to change compulsive behavior into intelligent choices, to change the testosterone, "I can do it by myself, leave me alone in isolation belligerence," to real men ask for help. Veterans return different than when they left. They have symptoms and emotions that they do not know how to handle and turn to self-medication through drugs and alcohol to drown pain. This tragedy could have been prevented, councilmembers.
Ethan Shankman will be followed by Cassandra Enzberg. Mr. Shankman, if you can come up right up here, oh, if you need to sit down, but if you could use the staff, the public table right there, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll let you know when your two minutes are up.
Testing. Just a quick note to the thoughtful questions surrounding advisory applicants and getting along with staff for the perception of potential personality conflicts regarding right human relations. My experience has been that despite a professional approach in addressing issues, a pattern persists by staff what appears to as evasive method from directly answering reasonable questions from the public. For instance, staff hasn't been cooperative in applying accurate information relating to diagram, chart, or graph on minutes where explicit relevant legal code exists for a panel to consider, such as downtown parking committee that is not currently compliant, prospectively opening to the city to a number of liabilities. Expertise of credentialed staff, to include Victor Garza and Paul Casey, have not been able to supply how parking committee fee structure is compliant with legislation surrounding handicap state law, Medicare federal law, or the perception of Article 13 in the California Constitution that says not to exceed surplus monetary amounts than the cost to run the parking division in question. Currently, surplus amounts totals beyond 1.5 million. Instead, I have been directed to the city attorney, whose function for the public is tasked to litigation, not general questions to explain legislation, so hence referral is inappropriate. Also, Browning Allen and Transportation Council's agreed upon scheduled meeting from last agenda for this month without reason effective December 5. Randy Rouse's incursion during my interview October 29 might be indicative to a certain contingent attitude within this clique. Hence, I believe my unique capacity is necessary in keeping our city ahead of the curve from a number of discrepancies by my being under a more empowered capacity and serving on the panel and applying how language can better attained under other legal process, quote-unquote, toward policy practice and procedure. November 19 scheduled interviewees of the DPC advisory applicants have not been seen anywhere during recent consecutive meetings this year. Trey Pinner, panel member reapplying for the board, has also been absent frequently, sometimes due to conflict of interest. It seems that no conflict of interest should occur anywhere on a micro-level subcommittee or that a panel member be required to abstain, as we might observe instead under City Council.
Thank you, your two minutes are up. Thank you very much. Cassandra Enzberg will be followed by Carol Home.
Greetings, and happy holidays, Mayor Schneider and City Council members. I'm here representing the Architectural Foundation of Santa Barbara and have brought you your 2014 Kids Draw Architecture calendars that I hope you'll enjoy. And I also wanted to take this moment to thank the council for the proclamation that you gave to the foundation earlier this year as we were beginning the celebration of our 30th year anniversary. And we are very, very proud of all of the services and the work that we do in the community to provide education. And we welcome you all to come and see us at the foundation, especially this Friday, because that is when we have the Kids Draw Architecture opening reception. So please enjoy the calendars, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Carol Home, AKA Mrs. Santa, followed by Nancy McCready, and then be followed by Bad Santa, whatever, Mr. Hanson. 'Tis the season, as they say. Go ahead. Good afternoon.
Hi. My name is Carol Home. I haven't been to one of these meetings, done this before, but I'm doing it now because I played unofficially, I played Mrs. Santa in your holiday parade. And I want to tell you, this one was the best. And I have a letter from Mrs. Santa to read to you, if I might. Dear revelers of the holiday parade, I, parade fanatic and Santa's most ardent supporter, wish to congratulate all the revelers at the holiday parade for making it a perfect union. The marching bands with thundering drums and brass rattled the buildings while the dancers and drill teams like trampolinists shook the ground, making both people and balloons jump for joy. Voices of children and carolers, sheriff's pipes, and even humming machines added to the mix. Standing together in unison, they sent a harmonic resonance all the way to the moon, which smiled in reflection. Our muses secured our blessings of liberty by freeing our minds. Our police sheriff and 5-5 fighters provided for our common defense while the downtown organization promoted our general welfare. Our state rep, DAS, established justice with his coloring book on law. And our city council, like wizards of Oz, ensured domestic tranquility by reminding us that there's no place like home. Santa, now animated and speaking to ourselves in posterity in our I.E. mother tongue, brings us, we the people, the full manifestations of the promises in the unifying words already To sac holy bah, Barbara, Santa Barbara, and those sta kam en oino an sta.
Need to wind up, please.
Standards together in unison on state, the kam sta yul, apo oino sta, the Constitution of the United States.
Thank you. Nancy McCready?
Could Santa's giving Bad Santa an answer?
You're giving your two minutes to Bad Santa? Okay, Bad Santa, behave, I hope. We'll be not, you know, you know how what Santa does. Alan Howard will be the next speaker, and then T. Martenson is the final speaker. Go right ahead. You have up to four minutes.
I feel privileged to speak to Santa Barbara as a community. Again, the crime time in the Sentinel, they mentioned a homeless person over here was arrested five times, well, three times in five days, but over here in this other little red section, a drunken 38-year-old Manson. Instead of calling him a transient, some Mansonet. How degrading can that be? But anyway, that's this paper, the Sentinel. On page six. Now, you're going to have today's City Council meeting, are you having one next Tuesday? Okay, you want to make my schedule right. Nancy's good Santa, I'm bad Santa. You know what Bad Santa does, don't you? He holds onto the podium and won't give it up. That's what Bad Santa does. Well, you know, Nelson Mandela died. And you know it hits your mind and hits your heart when someone dies, you start to think about him. What did that guy do? He had a quote that was in the paper the other day, "Never and never again should the oppression of anyone of another." That means Sentinel, you go on City Council, Police Department, the Parks people, or Service Masters, or Gold Green, pick up people's stuff and throw it away. Just the oppression, the hatred, the Mansonet statement, the transient. Never and never again should the oppression of anyone of another were anyone. And we should not do that to the mayor, or even Dale, you know, and Dale knows that I don't like him, but that's life in the big city, you know? Elton John was just in a state, and they had just banned gays and stuff, and he said, "Stop the propaganda. Stop the propaganda against unhoused citizens." They've been here for 30 days, they're our citizens in this Santa Barbara community. Stop the propaganda of the aggressive panhandler chasing people away from State Street. State Street's a zoo. Have you been down there? I was over at the Shell Station on a Saturday night. Taxi cab is running in and out, getting gas, bringing those drunks all over the place. I was telling Nancy, you know, what's the difference between someone in a coffee shop drinking coffee, lots of coffee, and someone in a bar drinking lots of alcohol? And I said, "You know what? They're all trying to get lucky." You know what that means, don't you? We're all trying to get lucky. It's been breezing out there. I got about a minute left. On the 29th of this month, Hank Dross has been serving people sandwiches, coffee, some soup down at Pershing Park for 29 years, 30 years, a long time. We have another person in this community that's a hero. Can you imagine doing that? He gives people socks. I don't like him. I don't like the way he preaches. He's sitting there saying, "But I like him." I told him the other day, "I don't like you, I love you." For doing that for that many years? To who? Drunks, people. Not all the homeless are drunks, not all the homeless are mentally ill. Now, you look over here in the houses all around this community, there's drunks, there's mentally ill. What's the percentage on the streets? Not much. I would think this 50/50 thing of half of them are drunks and half of them are mental is bullshit. It should be, you have to see a person and what kind of, you know, situation. Hell, maybe he had a beer. You can't even go to the Casa Esperanza now if you have a beer. A beer, one beer, that's something that you do in a little bit. It's not you're abusing it, but anyway, back to the thing. On the 29th, Pershing Park, from 8:00 to 10:00, we're honoring this man. Be there or be square. Anyone in this community can come there and say, "Thank you for doing that service."
Thank you.
Out of his own pocket. Thank you very much.
Alan Howard?
Hello, my name is Alan Howard. I'm here to thank the City Council, the City Administrator, and the Police Department in helping the business community respond to the problem transients that have inundated our community from the north these last few weeks. Now, I want to be clear about who I'm talking about here. These are the homeless by choice substance abusers. Finding solutions to the challenges this population poses is difficult, and we in the business community look forward to working on these solutions in the future.
Let's stop the clock. Mr. Hanson, if you could. If you could, please, sit down, Mr. Hanson. Mr. Hanson, can you let the man speak? Mr. Hanson?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, I'll restart the clock. Go ahead.
I've been on Lower State Street for 20 years now, and this year, with the cold climate to the north, it's flushed quite a bit of people down into our area, and they're harassing the community and the tourists we invite to our community, and I'm glad to see that our city is responding to the misbehavior of these people transiting our town. Thank you very much.
T. Martenson will be the final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Trevor Martenson, architect. I think you all know that I represent Dr. Arthur Posh, and hopefully you have his letter. The reason for this is there have been some things in the news that have not been quite correct, and so we're trying to write the record. And so, to Mayor Schneider and the council members, and of course, the public out there, I would like to tell all of you for the record that I sold my business on Haley Street in August of 2002. I have worked at White's Pet Hospital from February 1973 to that date in 2002, and have made many numerous friends on the street during that timeframe. On the week of June 7, I heard about the city's plans to build a huge building for the less fortunate. Wanting to be a better citizen, I wanted to help and make this a win-win for all the people involved. On June 10, the project review by the ABR was shocking to all the Haley Street people by the size, bulk, and scale of this project. The applicant has modified this project, but apparently the public mountain views have not been considered important by the applicant and the city. This was very evident on the site visit before the appeal hearing, where council members and staff only wanted to hear the good things the architect and applicant presented. Clearly, the writing was on the wall, as noted in the staff report from the housing authority, excuse me, which said, "They, the people self-help housing, need to be welcomed, encouraged, and not further delayed, as time is money, and their motivation is not profit-driven. They are here to assist our community, address a well-recognized and long-established community need." My question is, if your motivation is not profit-driven, then time should not be a factor in regarding the money issue, or is it? The money ties here between the city and the applicant is way too close and should be questioned. If a developer in the future wants the city to facilitate a project because he or she needs to get a loan to build the proposed project in three or four months or lose that project, what would the city staff and council say to that applicant? You are elected by the people for the people, and this has been forgotten by the city. During this time period, I have received multiple threats regarding my involvement to protect the Haley Corridor from this huge project under the OD program. Now I must decide if I will stop or continue this fight for the Haley Corridor stakeholders. Respectfully submitted from the desk and pen of Art Posh.
Thank you.
Thank you, and if there's any questions, please ask.
Okay, that concludes public comment. We're moving item number 19 up, if you could read that.
Public employment, public employee appointment.
So we don't need to move to closed session for this. The council met in a notified closed session meeting last week, and very pleased to announce that Sarah Connect is going to be our acting city attorney, and she's in the audience here. Mr. Wiley is retiring at the end of this year, so we have some time for the two of them to connect over the next couple of weeks to do the big brain dump from Mr. Wiley, and we're confident that Ms. Connect will be able to move us during this transitional period smoothly and with all the things that the City Attorney's Office does, so we want to just announce that and to congratulate you, and we look forward to working with you, Ms. Connect. Do you want to say anything at this point, or?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for this appointment, and I will do my best to continue the provision of the best possible legal services by the City Attorney's Office. And Mr. Wiley, thank you for 10 years of showing me how to be a great city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. So the process, just so people know, of the recruitment period is on its way, and we look to make some decisions actually about the finalists next week in closed session, and then we'll schedule time in early next year for interviews for the regular positions. So, and in the meantime, we look forward to working with Ms. Connect as the acting city attorney. Okay, so that's it for item number 19. Let's move on to the consent calendar, and you have some items to read.
Item three, resolution of council findings regarding Arlington Village, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara denying the appeal and upholding the decision of the Historic Landmarks Commission to approve the application of Metropolitan Theaters Corporation for a project located at 1330 Chapala Street and known as the Arlington Village Project. And item four, local coastal program grant application resolution recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara supporting a grant application to update the City of Santa Barbara Local Coastal Program to address sea level rise, coastal hazards, and other climate change-related impacts.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. We have a public comment speaker slip for item number 12. Are there any other items, anyone needs to take off the consent?
Item number three, please.
Item number three? Okay, why don't we go in order? Item three is the, it was already read, it's the findings regarding Arlington Village, and Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At our last discussion of this topic, I voted against the majority on council. I believed then, and I still believe, that this project, because of its scope and because of its location in the core of our downtown historic district and its historic importance because of the Arlington Theater and the Arlington Hotel before that, I believe that this project deserved Planning Commission review. So I will be voting against it again, or voting against denying the appeal. But I also wanted to point out as a detail, I'm not entirely clear on what the council thought about the whole issue of the Paseos, which was one of the things that the appellant brought up. But I think there's an opportunity here, at least, even though I won't be voting for this, I'm going to suggest to the full council, if you look at page six of 15 in the HLC Conditions number 14, sort of high in the middle of the page, Condition C, the Paseo connection from Alma del Pueblo to the existing Paseo system that connects to Solace Street, this is talking about things for the HLC to look at. I think you might also want to suggest to the HLC to examine, and I don't even know if this is possible, but the Paseo in front of the Arlington, of course, has been there since the Arlington was there. If there's any opportunity, now that there's no longer the Bonds parking lot, if there's any opportunity to extend the Paseo behind the Arlington, and I don't know if there is, but I think that it would be worth telling the HLC that's something to examine, because this is the only opportunity we'll have to examine that for, possibly for decades. So just a suggestion.
Obviously, we'll vote on this separately. Any other comments or questions on this? Mr. White?
Oh, Madam Mayor, thank you. First of all, to Mr. Francisco's comment, I would expect our council to say that we can't change what we did, so that's what we're sort of doing today. And I'm not exactly clear on what your specific request is. I mean, we talked about the little entry gate there, and then the connectivity between that and the building, is that what you're referring to, is?
I wasn't referring to that, because I think there are insuperable difficulties to connecting that gate to any kind of a walkway within the project, but there may be an opportunity, and I take your point, obviously, this is resolving something that's already been voted on once. But I do think it would be worth looking at any opportunity to create another pedestrian walkway to the rear of the Arlington. I don't know if that's possible or not, but it's something HLC could look at.
Ms. Mario? Oh, go, I'm sorry, Mr. White.
I would ask our council what options we have today to make any comments to that effect.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, yes, generally, I agree that findings resolution after an appeal hearing is really not the place to be making substantive changes in the conditions of approval in this case. And yet, I think clarifications can at times be appropriate. So the question is, is this a substantive change or a clarification? And I don't, actually don't know enough about this 14C referring to a Paseo connection between Alma del Pueblo and the existing Paseo system to know if it's really referring to the same thing that Mr. Francisco may be referring to in the sense that it could merely be just a clarification of that language, or if it's a substantive change.
And I don't either. So I, I mean, the whole notion of connectivity is an important issue, and I think if it could be just framed in a way of saying, have HLC review the connectivity in the project, in the Paseo system, I think that would be a broad enough point that's not hardline.
I think that's exactly what it says, in my opinion. It's working with the applicant on the elements that includes the Paseo connection from Alma del Pueblo to the existing Paseo system that connects to Solace Street, so that seems pretty holistic to me, but that's the way I'm, I guess HLC will be looking at that. And I don't think we should change something that we did. I agree with you there, right?
Can't do that.
Right. Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe the project has been through extensive review, and at the City Council hearing, we vetted the issue of the Paseos, so I would move that we pass the resolution.
Move item three, is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did, real quickly. I actually believe from the presentation by the applicant that they demonstrated or showed that that very, what now is a very slender sidewalk that goes between Bonds and Arlington Theater, that is part of the Paseo network. They were, they were talking about connecting that, and I-
They were, they were talking about connecting that, and I'm looking out to see if I'm correct in my recollection, looking at here at the applicant, and maybe they'd want to clarify for us, but I think that was already part of the project description, and I think that, I mean, we all have a sentiment towards that.
Yeah, Madam Chairmembers of the council, yes, there is a planned link between the Alma de Pueblo project right behind the theater to the existing paseos that exist, that are now, are currently present, but will be improved as part of the project, so we do have that connection at the back of the theater. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item 3's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
I move the rest of the consent calendar.
If we could, before we do that, if you could read item number 12?
Declaration of fire engine as surplus and donation of said fire engine.
Thank you. We have, from Allen Hancock College, come on up, David, and I can't read your last name, so you're going to have to tell me what it is, and then our chief, McElroy.
David Senior, I am the Director of Fire Safety at Allen Hancock College and have been for almost 30 years. I want to thank Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. Armstrong for this generous donation. I don't think we can overstate what this means to fire service training in Santa Barbara County. Many of our students are now your firefighters, and we think in the future that will only continue. You know, people say that in an emergency, the fire departments rise to the occasion. That's not true. What we do is we default to our training, and so it's this kind of generosity that gives us an engine that works well enough for us to train with, perhaps not well enough to still run on fires, but it still runs well enough for us to train with for several years to come, that helps us train our students to become good firefighters, and we appreciate so much this generous donation. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Chief, did you want to say anything?
Madam Mayor, the council members, this particular truck has been in service at city for 30 years. It's one of an old Mack truck, and it's been all over this state. I went with it to the North Ridge earthquake in 1994. It's been in fires in Yosemite Park, Northern California, all through the county, the Painted Cave Fire, the Zaca, the Hesizita, so it's been, had been a really, really great truck for this department. And speaking about Allen Hancock, I just sent out a quick email yesterday, and I know that a lot of people in the department haven't got it yesterday, asking how many people were Hancock graduates, and to date, I've got over 40% of the department. So it's a, it's a much higher number than I thought, and four of your chiefs in this department are Hancock graduates, including Chief Bryden and Chief McCoy back in the back there. So it's been a really great partnership, and I'm really happy that this truck is going to stay in the county, continue to train firefighters for this county, for various departments. So, thank you very much.
That's great news. Thank you very much. It's great news. Okay, did you want to make that motion, then?
Yes, I move the rest of the consent calendar, including this wonderful exchange.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm onto item number 14.
2014 Waterfront Refunding Revenue Bonds, recommending A, that the board adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Santa Barbara Financing Authority authorizing the execution and delivery by the authority of an installment sale agreement, a trust agreement, and a letter agreement for purchase in connection with the execution and delivery of Santa Barbara Financing Authority Waterfront Refunding Revenue Bonds Series 2014, authorizing the execution and delivery of such bonds in an aggregate amount not to exceed $14 million, and authorizing related actions. And B, that council introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the execution and delivery by the city of an installment sale agreement and a letter agreement for purchase, and approving the execution of a trust agreement by the authority in connection with the execution and delivery of Santa Barbara Financing Authority Waterfront Refunding Revenue Bonds Series 2014, and authorizing related actions.
Thank you. Mr. Samario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Bob Samario, Finance Director. We are here to have council, or seeking council's approval of documents, an ordinance and a resolution and the related documents to allow us to execute a refinancing of 2002 waterfront bonds through the issuance of 2014 waterfront revenue refunding bonds. First, want to introduce the folks that have been involved with this project. It's been several months, and not only myself, but Scott Redman, the waterfront director, has been involved, Sarah Connect, Assistant City Attorney, very involved, and we also have from Orick Harrington, Suffolk, our bond counsel, Mr. Bill Bothwell, he's here in the second, third row, so in case there are any questions about any legal aspect, he's here, of course, to answer. So, background, pretty straightforward, you know, we are in a very, very low-interest-rate environment currently, it's been, they're historic, it's historically low interest rates right now we're looking at, and anytime we have, we see this, just like if you would for your own mortgage, we look for opportunities to refinance existing debt to lower our payments, obviously save money, so a good thing. You may recall about six months ago, we were here and had council approve the waterfront debt refinancing, we refinanced the 2002 water COPs and a state revolving loan. It resulted in savings on an annual basis of about $180,000 per year, so a lot of money to be saved there, that we did accomplish, I should say. We have a similar situation with the waterfront COPs, we're not going to see the same types of savings, it's still something that's worthwhile for us to pursue, and so we have been doing that. So, just to talk about the financing structure, important to recognize that enterprise revenue bonds do require, under our city charter, a vote of our, a majority vote of our residents. Unfortunately, that's problematic for us, that's not a very practical thing for us to do, to go out and get, have our voters approve our refinancing, that's all it's going to do is save money. There is a cost to that, it's going to, it's going to involve some amount of time, and you know, time means we could be losing the current interest rate environment, and therefore just basically prevent us from saving any money. So what we've done is, and we use, and we have done this in the past, we use what's called the Santa Barbara Financing Authority to facilitate this debt issuance. We did it in 2002, we've done it with airport bonds, so it's not uncommon. It's a joint venture between the city and the former RDA, and the RDA now is really replaced by the successor agency. And when the authority issues bonds, it doesn't require a vote of our voter approval, because it's not subject to our city charter. So the bonds would be issued by this authority, but the bonds are ultimately going to be paid by the waterfront fund, and so it's really those revenues that repay the debt. And we're going, we're going to talk about a financing structure that allows this authority to issue bonds, but still have it be paid off by the waterfront end, and it's going to be sort of a fictional story I'm going to describe, but as long as you keep in mind that the point is for us to be able to refinance debt in order to save money, and ultimately the substance is it is a debt of the waterfront fund, but we have to kind of do this exercise to, in order to avoid the charter requirement that we get a voter approval. So on the top left, you'll see the first step is that the authority will be issuing bonds, and we're estimating that to be about $14 million right now. So they'll sell the bonds to investors, you'll see the bonds going to the bottom to the investors, and in return, of course, those investors would then give the authority $14 million. And now the authority has that money, but it has to find a way to get it to our city or to our waterfront fund, and this is where it gets kind of interesting. The authority essentially buys from the city the improvements that were originally made with the original debt, and so it buys it from the waterfront fund, and for that, it pays $14 million. So it buys these assets, these improvements from the waterfront fund, and it gives $14 million to the city, and then that money then is used at the bottom, at the top or bottom right to pay off the existing debt. So the $14 million flows from the investors to the authority, to the city, and then to the, to the escrow agent who retires those old bonds. At this point, though, we have a situation where the authority has no revenue source, so it has to find a way to get money from the waterfront fund. And what it does is it is, it sells those same assets back to the waterfront fund for the same amount of money, $14 million. Again, this is, this is fiction, but this is the legal structure to allow this to happen, and instead of paying $14 million at once, the waterfront says, we're going to pay you back, but over time, we're going to pay you on an installment basis, and there's an underlying installment agreement associated with this, and those payments will basically coincide with the debt service requirements in the bonds that were issued by the authority. So, we create a flow of money back to the authority from the waterfront fund through an installment agreement that really buys back those assets in return for $14 million paid over time. So on an ongoing basis, semi-annual and annual basis, the waterfront fund from its revenue sources will be paying the authority installment payments, and those funds will then be used by the authority to pay the trustee, who will then pay the money to the investors for their principal and interest on those bonds. Any questions on that? I know it's convoluted, but if you keep in mind that it's ultimately really going to be involving the waterfront fund and the investor, everything else is really kind of fictional in order to make this happen, but essentially, the waterfront fund is going to be paying the investors off on the bonds that it essentially has sold. Okay? So, a unique characteristic to this financing is that we are proposing what's called a private placement. Typically, when we sell bonds and tradition, this is the first time for the city, when we sell bonds or issue bonds, whether it be the waterfront fund or the waterfront, those bonds are sold to the, to basically of an investment bank, and then they sell them to private investors or institutional investors. So, for example, you could buy those municipal bonds, some institutional investors could be a pension fund, for example, but they're really made available to the public. In this case, we're proposing what's called a private placement, where we're going to sell those bonds to one entity, what's called a qualified institutional buyer, and it is essentially a bank, and they will be holding all of the bonds rather than being sold to, in a sense, to other investors. And the reason we're considering this and proposing this is because there is a lot of time and effort on the part of staff in order to sell bonds to investors. We've got to put together essentially what's called a prospectus, or the official statement, which describes the city and the waterfront fund, and a lot of financial information. It's primarily the city having to compile the information, working with our financial advisors and our bond counsel, a lot of work, a lot of time, and this is an opportunity for us to save that time, and also to reduce our transaction costs, because there is, we have to pay for our financial advisor's time, our bond counsel, and of course, we even have to pay the rating agency to rate those bonds. So in this case, we're going to be able to avoid that. Some other considerations, typically for a private placement, you see higher interest rates, or you have to pay a higher interest rates, but in this case, we're actually going to be able to see lower interest rates than we otherwise would have had we issued the bonds on a, through a public offering. There are different kinds of risks, but they're all pretty minimal, so we don't see anything substantively different than just a public offering in this case. The only really risk we have, I think, at this point is if this doesn't go through, if we don't, if we fail to execute this transaction, we would have to pay the banks' legal fees of not to exceed $15,000. So that's really our, kind of our exposure, but we have no expectation that we wouldn't execute this transaction.
Mr. House has a question.
Just in the, in the, I mean, I think I get it, and I know you've got more to present, but just on the risk piece, so it seems like the risk to the financing agency, or, is that what we're called?
Financing authority.
Financing authority, authority, is if for some reason the waterfront wasn't able to pay back the increments on a, on a regular basis, and then I suppose we would be talking to the city council and asking them for money from the general fund of some source to be able to make the, to continue the payments back to the investors. And then the question I have is from the investor's side, with whom are they dealing? Are they dealing with the waterfront, or are they dealing with the financing authority? Who is it that is accountable in this?
Sure. So the first question, Councilmember House, the risk, there's always a risk that the entity that's securing the debt, so the waterfront in this example, is not able to pay back its, the bonds or the debt, and it's, we don't, we, that's, that would be an unusual situation, we'd have to be looking at some kind of a natural disaster, or something that prevents them from actually generating revenues to pay back the debt. Of course, the city has the ability to step in if there's that, because I think they would see that as a moral obligation to the investors, not necessarily a legal one. But the, in terms of the second question, the investors really work with our fiscal agent or trustee, they're, that's who they really interact with, and their own individual brokers in terms of buying and selling bonds, but we don't get directly involved with investors in a tip on a public offering. In this case, it's a little different, because we are working with, and you'll see, one investor, and so we would probably have more interaction, because we'll be paying them essentially directly for, on the principal and the interest on the bonds.
I see, but their relationship would be through their, the broker, or whomever they're working with. Now, that broker's making the agreement with the city of Santa Barbara, but internally, it's the financing authority with the waterfront, being the ones that holds the responsibility and accountability to pay. All right, thank you.
So, we actually, when we went into this, we weren't considering a private placement, but we were approached through, by Compass Mortgage for a private placement. Based on that, we thought, well, we might as well test it out, and we actually went through an RFP process. We, we sent out an RFP through to 13 institutional banks or entities. We've got, we got only two proposals back, because this is unusual, and Compass Mortgage did offer us the best, basically best price, their interest rates were lower, and as I said earlier, even lower than we would have expected through a public offering, so we are at this point recommending that we go with Compass Mortgage Bank. And so, we talked about this financing structure, really what we're talking about is rather than the investors being at the bottom right, it's really just one investor, and that's Compass Mortgage. So the whole financing structure stays exactly the same, except that the bonds would be sold to one entity versus through, to the general public. Some real savings as a result of this, you can see that this is, the first or the middle column shows what we would be expected to pay or generate in savings through a public offering versus what we are proposing with, using Compass Mortgage. So the transaction costs for a public offering, we'd be paying about $160,000, that's through our bond counsel and financial advisor. In this case, we'd be saving about $45,000, because the time is just less through this kind of a structure. We wouldn't have to pay a rating agency, because again, it's one investor, it's not made public, it's not available to the public, and then legal fees, we could potentially be paying $15,000 if we don't execute the transaction. The all-interest rate or costs, when you include all transaction costs, we would be expecting to pay 4.08%, in this case, we are expecting somewhere around 3.69%, so really a better deal and a win-win for everybody. The amount of money we'd save through this transaction on a nominal basis, almost $900,000 through a public offering, but $1.1 million through, going with Compass Mortgage proposal. On a net present value basis, it's a little less than that. You can see some percentages there, 6.3% and 7.8. Typically, the threshold is 3%, if you can generate about 3% overall savings, it's worthwhile pursuing. In this case, we're well above that threshold. On an annual basis, you could see that we're, we will be saving through the Compass Mortgage proposal about $170,000 in the first year, and then thereafter, $60,000. We're probably looking at, sort of normalizing this every year to about $80,000 per year. So it's still higher than we would through a public offering. So it's not like the waterfront, or I'm sorry, the waterfront deal where we saved $180,000, we're saving about $80,000, but still worthwhile for us to pursue. The documents that we are looking to have you approve, there are two primary documents. One is the resolution, which is the Santa Barbara Financing Authority resolution, and that approves the related documents, the installment sale agreement, the trust agreement with our fiscal agent, the letter agreement of purchase, and as well approves the issuance of the bonds by the authority, and then there's the ordinance that the city would be issuing, and this would be a first reading of the ordinance, as you know, and essentially approves the same documents, except that the city also has to be involved in approving it, and because it extends five years, it requires an ordinance. There's also a, another document we're looking to have you approve, and that's a letter of commitment that essentially binds us to this transaction, it's between the city and Compass Bank, and it just really provides them that assurance that we are going to follow through with this transaction. And as I said earlier, if we don't, then we still have to pay $15,000 in legal fees to them. So our next steps, so today, we have the resolution of the authority and the ordinance, and next week, we'll have the second reading of the ordinance, and then in January, on January 17th, the, that ordinance will be, would take effect, and shortly thereafter, around the 24th, we would be actually executing all the transaction, or consummating the So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any speaker slips on this? No? Questions, comments from the council? Mr. Francisco?
Madam Mayor, the Finance Committee reviewed this in painstaking detail and found it totally acceptable.
Is that a motion, then?
I move that we approve A, B, and C as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Thank you. Okay, item number 15.
Freedom Warming Centers Funding Request.
Thank you. Ms. Gray, whenever you're ready.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Sue Gray, and I'm the Community Development Business Manager in the Community Development Department. Today, we're here, I'm here before you regarding a request from the Unitarian Society in support of an emergency overflow site for the Freedom Warming Centers. The Unitarian Society is the fiscal agent for the warming centers. On October 22nd, council heard about programmatic changes at Casa Esperanza Homeless Shelter, and how their move to a sobriety-based shelter may have an impact on the Freedom Warming Centers. And at that meeting, I, I stated that council may receive And at that meeting, I stated that council may receive a request for an expansion of the warming centers this winter. The purpose of the warming centers is to ensure that homeless individuals have emergency temporary shelter on nights of inclement weather to avoid hypothermia and death. And due to the changes at Casa Esperanza, as well as other shelters being at capacity for the last several months, the warming centers are expecting an increase of approximately 50 people per night. In August, in anticipation of the potential impacts of Casa Esperanza going to a sobriety-based shelter, the Central Coast Collaborative for Homelessness, or C3H, formed a subcommittee to help develop an emergency response plan for the safe operation of the warming centers this winter. The task force included C3H staff members, the Santa Barbara Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, county administration, county public health, Cottage Hospital, shelter providers, and other interested representatives. The task force helped the warming centers develop an emergency protocol, which includes the, includes obtaining a overflow site for the warming centers. The protocol that was developed states that the overflow site will be activated when the scheduled site is at 90% capacity. At that time, notification will go out to the Office of Emergency Management, Cottage Hospital, the Sheriff's Department, and Santa Barbara Police Department, among all the other notifications that they send out on a regular basis. At that time, those entities can direct referrals to either Casa Esperanza's medical bed, reserve vulnerability bed at the primary warming center location, or the overflow site. The warming centers may also pilot a volunteer program to help refer appropriate guests to Casa Esperanza and to other services. The request from the warming centers is $15,000 to support the overflow site. The costs include staff, supplies, transportation, and insurance. The total that they, the total needed for the overflow site is just over $40,000. They are planning on requesting some support from the county and other foundations for the balance. Staff's recommendation is to grant up to $15,000 to the Freedom Warming Centers for the overflow site, using the interest earned on the overnight accommodation mitigation fee that the city received from the La Entra de project. These funds were given to the city to mitigate the loss of low-cost lodging that was provided from the former Californian Hotel. Interest earned on this fund has been used for similar purposes since 2009. There's approximately $20,000 left in that fund that's not appropriated of interest income, and the principal remains untouched. And at this time, I'm happy to take questions, and Maria Long, who's the Director of the Warming Centers, is also here, if you have questions for her.
Thank you. Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The warming centers have been open, haven't they, for the last week or last couple of weeks? Do you have numbers of how?
Correct. Ms. Long can come up and give some information.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, yes, so we have been activated a total of eight nights with this cold front across the county, and in those nights, countywide, we've served or provided 597 beds. Of those nights of activation, 461 beds have been within Santa Barbara. We've actually had to activate an overflow church already these past three nights, because we reached capacity at the Unitarian Society, and that was by pulling in favors from some of the other congregations. So, we anticipate, again, tonight, we will be at overflow again, and overflow will be at First Congregational. We've already developed our system, Rockstar Cab takes them up there once we reach capacity at the Unitarians. So, this particular project is going to help us tremendously to get through this winter. Last year, again, we, in 48 nights, we served 4,184 people.
Individual people?
Beds.
The beds, so some of those were.
Some, from, some frequent guests, but we're also seeing quite a few new people again, this year already, and we're starting to track that as well.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you share with us the names of the private foundations that have, are participating in this effort?
We just received, actually, I got notification today from the Santa Barbara Foundation for a capacity grant. We were fully funded from that. Of course, we'll be writing a CDBG grants to all the cities. I'm going to make a request also to the city of Carpinteria, who just opened their veterans' hall over the weekend. So, we'll be going to multiple sources and private donors to make up the gap in the funding requests.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? We do have some public comment.
No.
Thank you very much, Ms. Long.
Thank you.
We have some public comment. Jeff Schaefer, we followed by Alan Howard, and then Bob Hanson.
Madam Chair and City Council Members, my name is Jeff Schaefer, and I think some of you know I'm the coordinator for C3H, so I was in some of those meetings that were recently held regarding the warming centers. So, I just want to encourage you to approve the funding that's being asked for. When the warming centers started up was around the same time that we brought the vulnerability index to the county to look at some of the people that are the most vulnerable on the streets, and try to bring together partners to make sure that those people didn't die on their streets, as well as help navigate them out of homelessness. So, we see the warming centers as essential to that, to their mission of making sure that people are warm and safe, as well as the community is also, has more safety with people being indoors and then being outdoors. So, we'd really encourage you to approve it. As the shelter systems too are impacted, we do believe there'll be more people potentially looking for shelter during the cold, and just this past week, experiencing the cold in our city, it can have really harsh impacts on people who are living on the streets. And I also like the idea of the overflow, what we're trying to do in the overflow is do some assessment work too, to try to work with the people that come into the overflow and assess where they're at, and also bring in some common ground peer navigators who can help people navigate out of homelessness. So, there's always the opportunity, when you build relationships like that, that you can move some people out of homelessness into housing, or reunify them with family members or other issues like that. So, we would like you to approve what the warming center is asking for. Thank you very much.
Alan Howard? Is he still here? I think he might have left. Okay, Bob Hanson, and then Ethan Shankman. Mr. Hanson, if you could please remove your mask, please. Mr. Hanson, please remove your bandana.
How many minutes we get? Couple?
You're going to have to remove your bandana before you can speak.
Well, I was from up north. I'm one of those transits.
No, you're going to have to remove your bandana.
I'm a scary one that came to town.
Thank you. You have two minutes.
Oh, God. What are we going to do about those transits that came from up north? They don't get to go to the warming center, do they? Anyway. We basically, the city is performing genocide on people that are unhoused. They basically have a sleeping law, it's called illegal lodging. They write 100 tickets to people, maybe 10 show up in court, those are thrown out, the other 90 go to warrant. They take people's stuff, it's called creek cleanup, and they go to anywhere, and Parks Department and other people, Service Master and Go Green takes off, doesn't even put a sign up saying they're going to be here in 24 hours. They show up, they take all their stuff, take their belongings, puts his, their wallet, you know, a backpack, throw it away. So, why are we sitting there and helping them in the cold? It was freezing last night. I was out there yesterday at about 5:00 o'clock, I got cold, I got my shorts on, I was cold. But why do we help these transits? Well, you know, they're people too. Everybody on this planet is people. You know, we could have an executive order signed and relieve all this pressure across this nation. A mayor can sign it, a governor, president could sign an executive order to get people into housing. Housing is the answer. This is just a little Band-Aid for winter. Looking at the count and saying, oh, yeah, we have 700 homeless people, and it looks like 20 will die, is just a little craziness. What we need is housing, someplace to call home. A person could pay, let's say, $200, or work 20 hours a month to have someplace to call home. Santa Barbara has been first in many things. We had the first volleyball courts. We started Earth Day. We can do this. We can sit there and make a positive, positive step, saying, you know what? Housing's the answer. We all know housing's the answer. And, you know, you go out on State Street, and there's basically some guy sitting there with a sign, or somebody sitting there going, hey, you got any spare change? They don't really hound you, it's the ones that really go, hey, you got spare change? You got spare change?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, your time's up.
That is aggressive panhandling. So, anyway, let's help everybody, let's get this thing on a national thing. We could be, Santa Barbara could be first in this. Thank you.
Mr. Shankman will be the final speaker.
I don't have anything particularly prepared or written for this topic today, but just want to emphasize again, Ms. Gray, if it's possible, that if there is an overflow, or even if there's not an overflow, that these are sacred shrines, religious places that are held sacred to children. And that having a structure where you're having cohabitation between two genders.
Could you address the council, please?
Oh, pardon me.
That's okay.
So, having a, having a structure for disaster relief under these sacred shrines, where you have two genders, both genders, obviously to share and cohabitate within these temples, it goes diametrically opposed to the theory or the philosophy that set these structures in place. I think it's a bit deep, I can quote scripture, but I think that a solution would be permissible, if not beneficial, to assign a gender, you know, one gender for, for one church facility, and another gender for another campus, without having them combined. I know that in, at Casa, the people were sequestered, they weren't sharing the same room, and it seems to be invoking a lot of bad, what do you want to call it, karma? You know, bad mojo? That kind of thing. So, something's not working, and around here, especially if you're getting increase in numbers, and maybe this might help.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. Your time is up, Mr. Hanson. Please. Mr. Hanson, you need to sit down. You need, you need to sit down, Mr. Hanson. Mr. Hanson, sit down.
They need to be part of everything.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Maria.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Shankman brings up an interesting point. Ms. Long, can you explain to us and the public if men and women are put in different areas, and if, if there are issues? I'm always praying for peace among the genders, but between the genders, among the genders is actually more appropriate, but what would you say, please?
Thank, thank you for the question. We do separate the men and the women in, in, for instance, in particular, the Unitarian Society, there's a separate room for the women. In some cases, when we're just, for instance, we were sleeping in, they were sleeping in the chapel of Trinity, we just separated the genders by area based on, on moving some of the furniture around. So, we do try to separate them. We do accept couples, we do accept pets. So, and so we put them also in a separate area too, and then our staff members, depending on the size of the facility, are awake all night long, making sure everybody's safe and secure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for the, on the item? Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the staff recommendation. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. I just want to thank all, there's a lot of volunteer work involved in this, and a lot of training from others who are staying up all night to make sure people are not out in the cold, so thank you very much. It's very important. Everyone's involved, the whole community's involved. So, with that, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Great. Thank you very much. Good luck with the other funding. Okay, item number 16.
Proposed city landmark designation of the Hodges House and property improvements at 2112 Santa Barbara Street, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara designating the Hodges House and property improvements at 2112 Santa Barbara Street as a city landmark.
Thank you. And are we doing 16 and 17 together? Is that, if you could read item, because they, they're connected. If you could read item 17 as well?
Mills Act Historic Property Contract for 2112 Santa Barbara Street, assessors parcel numbers 025252006 and 007.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Francisco.
Because I'm a board member of the Pearl Chase Society, and the Pearl Chase Society has discussed this issue, though I have recused myself from those discussions, I still feel it's appropriate for my, for me to recuse myself from this discussion as well.
Okay. I believe this is a four-vote majority issue, so that's not an issue with the quorum here, is that correct? I'm hearing, seeing nods. Okay. Thank you very much, we'll see you in a bit. Mr. Lamone, happy 30th anniversary, first off.
Thank you. Sorry I wasn't here earlier.
Well, you're here now, and you're still working.
Yes.
That's good. Okay. And Mr. Hernandez, please, whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Nicole Hernandez, the Urban Historian, and today, we have in front of you the city landmark proposal for the property on 2112 Santa Barbara Street as a historic, as a historic landmark designation. The Historic Landmark Commission and the staff feel this is an excellent candidate for a city landmark designation. The building is done in the elegant Italian Mediterranean style by some of the best architects at the time. Almost all its original features are intact, and the new owner is proposing a high-quality restoration of the building. I'm going to walk you through the history and how the property meets the criteria to have the honor of the city landmark designation. The building was constructed in 1921. It was designed for Walter Hodges, who was the vice president of the Santa Fe Railroad, and it was designed by the noted local architectural firm Sewell, Murphy &amp; Hastings, and the landscape design was done by one of the most famous regional landscape architects at the time, Ralph Talent Stevens. The property sits on the corner of Santa Barbara and East Padre Streets, taking up almost half the city block. The proposed boundary of the city designation is the entire parcel, including the sandstone walls, as most of the landscaping is still intact from Ralph Talent Stevens' design. This does include the large specimen trees and excludes non-contributing modern elements that are on your exhibits A1 and A through A4 on the resolution. But these, the examples of non-contributing elements would be like the new proposed swimming pool, or new proposed pavers that were not part of the original landscape design. The property does qualify for the city landmark status as per the Santa Barbara Municipal Code 2222040. Under Criterion A, the property qualifies because it was designated by the noted firm Sewell, Murphy &amp; Hastings. The landscape was designed by Ralph Talent Stevens for Walter Hodges, the vice president of the Santa Fe Railroad. Because of these reasons, the property is of significant value to the heritage of Santa Barbara. Criterion C, the property is associated with Walter Hodges, who significantly contributed to the development of Southern California. He played a leading role in the expansion of the railroad's Los Angeles to San Francisco Criterion D, the house exemplifies the Italian Mediterranean style. As interpreted in the early 20th century by architects such as Sewell, Murphy &amp; Hastings, the Italian Mediterranean style drew heavily on the architectural heritage of the Italian and Spanish Renaissance. The stylistic characteristics of the style are the symmetrical rectangular massing, the symmetrical facade, the low-hipped terracotta roof, and the smooth stucco walls. Also, the Italian Renaissance-style garden was designed in a series of parterres with boxed hedges and roses and flowering plants, and hardscape features that include the axially-aligned brick pathways, pergolas, and wall fountains. The design vocabulary of these landscapes was generally drawn from classical European antecedents. Criterion E, the Italian Mediterranean-style house and its garden represent the neighborhood's best surviving example of an early 20th-century Italian Mediterranean-style estate. Criterion F, the architectural form of Sewell, Murphy &amp; Hastings played an important role in developing the regional architectural style for California, inspired by the state's colonial missions and Italian and Spanish Mediterranean antecedents. Because the firm's legacy lies in their concerted effort to make the Spanish and Mediterranean styles, the city's dominant architectural styles, this is a significant contribution. Ralph Talent Stevens was a visionary landscape architect who employed indigenous native flora and fauna with naturalistic settings and integrated them in the. and fauna with naturalistic settings and integrated them in the formal scheme. Criterion G, this house demonstrates outstanding attention to the architectural design, details, materials, and craftsmanship, as noted in, or as can be seen in the intricately carved wood door, the designs on the doors around, the wood casement windows, the iron balconies. For 92 years, this building has sat on the corner of Santa Barbara and East Padre Streets. It, along with its garden and sandstone walls along the street edge, have formed an established and familiar feature of the neighborhood. The house, as well as the gardens, have retained their original features and hardscape, including the walls, the sandstone walls. They remain, they retain the integrity of location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association that allow it to convey its original appearance. Staff and Historic Landmark recommend, the Historic Landmark Commission recommend that there is sufficient evidence on record that supports the city landmark designation of the Hodges House at 2112 Santa Barbara Street, and that council adopt a resolution to designate the Hodges House as a landmark. And I will turn it over to Mr. Limone to continue the presentation.
Madam Mayor, council members, before I get into the specifics regarding the Mills Act contract that's being proposed for this property, I do want to give council some background information. Some of you were not here when the Mills Act program was adopted, so I thought it was best to give you a background information on what the Mills Act program is, as well as how the city adopted the program here. Specifically, we did put some caps in place, and that's why this property is coming before you today, to grant some exception to a cap element of that. And I also will provide a quick synopsis update on the program, because in fact, when we adopted this program in 2009, council asked that, or directed us to come back and give you some update on where we are after two or three years on the program. So, let's get into what the Mills Act contract... So, the Mills Act contract allows property owners to enter in contract with the city to preserve, maintain, or rehabilitate structures. This is an act that was enacted in 1972, so it's been around for a while, and the city was very interested in adopting this type of incentive, and we worked hard, working with council members, to try to get support to get this in place, and as well as the Historic Landmark Commission's interest in getting this incentive in place. So, we believe it's now starting to kick in, we're going to get more and more properties that will be interested in this, taking advantage of this tax abatement process. So, it does require the county tax assessor to determine the valuation of the property using an income method, and what it basically does is it determines that on the income method, you could reassess the property in a different manner, not from the current assessed value. And it does result in an overall reduction in the assessed value, which translates, obviously, into a reduced tax bill for property owners. And the intent behind this is to have those funds be redirected back into the home in order to preserve, maintain, and in some cases renovate, restore, properties to their original intent, and keeping the historic integrity in place. Property, again, owners do benefit from this reduction in property taxes. Again, we do monitor these contracts. Many communities are already participating. We did, when we adopted this program, did considerable research and investigated how other cities set up their programs, and we developed program guidelines that were adopted by council, and I'll speak to that a little shortly. And there were concerns when this program was adopted regarding the number and range of property evaluations that would come forward, and for that reason, there were placed a maximum amount of eight contracts per year, and I'll get again into those caps later. Next slide. So, the program was established as a pilot program, and the reason we say it's a pilot program, because we didn't have an unlimited amount of contracts that could be executed every year. Again, we adopted a program guidelines document that indicated that there were specific qualification criteria, that it did indicate by ordinance that an exception could be granted, and that's what's before you today, a specific exception to that, one of those caps. Eight contracts per year, again, as I included, I previously stated, we can't in fact include two commercial structures. We have not had a commercial structure propose a contract, and I think part of that reason is the 1.5 million assessed valuation cap. There are not a lot of commercial properties that qualify under that provision, so it's something that we may want to look into adjusting in the future, if we're really interested into it. The, is a 300,000 max, there's a missing zero there, cap on total revenue loss. However, we're nowhere close to that revenue loss cap, so I'm here to tell you that we only have had two contracts approved at this time, so we're well below that. So, number six there is the 1.5 million property value assessment cap on the property, and that's the specific criteria cap that's being requested to be amended for this particular contract. Every contract has a 10-year rehabilitation plan that's presented, that's part of the contract draft included in your council report. The review of that rehabilitation plan is made by staff, the City's historian, as well as Historic Landmark Commission, to understand the scope of the renovations and repairs. We do monitor these contracts, again, because there are not a lot of contracts at this time, we are able to manage these contracts. The Historic Landmark Commission and Community Development Director review typically these contracts, so you have not seen the prior to executed contracts. The reason you're seeing this one, again, is an exception is being requested, and we do have contract application fees, processing fees that are required in order for us to execute these contracts. Next slide. So, the city's program, again, was directed to report back in two to three years. What we've had with these two contracts is an average 50% reduction in property taxes, so we actually can tell property owners that there is a break here for you, and it has turned into an advantage for property owners to take these contracts and execute these contracts. Every property owner is individual, there's a specific calculation, so it's kind of difficult to estimate, but we do, we have been successful in trying to give the property owners an indication. Again, no significant revenue loss. We have two contracts pending, the one before you today, and we have another one that will be executed by the Community Development Director and the City Administrator. The number of potential eligible properties has increased since 2009. We now have increased the number of designated properties and the identified properties that are going to be proposed as part of historic district that is planned to be coming forward in the following year or two, and so that has increased the potentials to 896. So, obviously, there are properties out there that could qualify, we haven't met the sort of demand rush for these applications. We expect them to be more popular, but at this point, we have not had that influx. So, again, no staffs to, no impacts to staff time at this time. Next slide. So, when this Mills Act proposal came forward to use, council placed these caps on, because it was difficult economic times, and there were concerns about the types of revenue losses that would happen if, in fact, we had a lot of contracts proposed every year. So, this is the slide that was prepared for you, that gave you an indication of the type of revenue loss that certain agencies would get, and here we have the estimate for the city of Santa Barbara would be 9.5% to 17% of the 1% tax revenue, and other agencies do get some reduced taxes as a result of this, but we don't believe, it's a fiscal impact at this point in time. So, the summary is that we believe we have excellent rehabilitation/restoration project, it's supported by the Historic Landmark Commission, we have an excellent set of plan documents prepared by Harrison Design Associates. It's going to return this former commercial use to residential property and give it the lasting integrity for it to be worthy of a city landmark designation. We believe the Mills Act program is working, and therefore, we'd like to have you consider the approval of the exception and grant a Mills Act Historic Property Contract for this property, as well as authorize the execution of the contract and adopt this resolution to designate the property as a city landmark. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions? We do have one public comment. Any questions first? Go ahead, Ms. Mario.
Can you describe, Mr. Limone, just quickly, the other two properties that are in the program?
Sure.
Was one in like a bungalow, or whatever?
There was one at 215 West Valeria Street, more of a Victorian structure, needs of repairs, and that has successfully moved forward, and some of the repairs are already concurred on that. And the other one was 821 Coronel Street, older, I believe, it was sort of an older state residence, that large piece of property, and they also took advantage and did some well-needed repairs to the property.
So, what I understand you saying is that there's a cap of, when we get to a loss of $300,000 in property tax value or revenue, then we wouldn't accept any more properties into the program?
Councilwoman Mario, Madam Mayor, I think the idea was that we recognize there would be some revenue loss over time, and it accumulates, it's compounded every year based on the number of contracts. So, I would expect to come back with another report in several years. Matter of fact, we were, if we were concerned with the number of contracts, we would actually do that annually, and have our finance director report that, that we were losing this revenue. But since it's been such a low demand for contracts, it's not really an issue now. In the future, if we get more contracts, we'll definitely come and ask council if you still want to have these types of contracts to execute, and as well as the staffing impacts. You know, there are some concerns that we had long-term with this program. If we had, let's say, 50 contracts, we require some type of monitoring of these contracts, and so we would be concerned about exactly how much time our urban historian has to go out and look at these properties.
Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Limone is, was fielding a tax exempt, property tax exempt enterprise, or activity?
I believe it was councilmember White. So, yes, now they are subject to the tax rules, but I may be mistaken, if, that's my assumption that it was.
Okay, thank you.
So, it wasn't really a net loss of property tax based on what we were experiencing?
For some time, I believe, yeah.
But, yeah, it's a good point. Mr. House.
Just a real quick comment. When this was coming through, I mean, I think there was a concern it might be really popular, and we didn't know, we wanted to put a cap so that we didn't get ahead of ourselves, and we could take a look back and judge whether we want to continue or not. Just two small questions, one has, and both of them have to do with the drawings that we had. I saw a pool that seems to be, was either designed for, or is planned for, that area of lawn out in the garden. Is that something that they're planning on adding? And that's one of those, you know, more modern features or something? Because it doesn't exist today, right?
Correct. It is not there at this time, but it has been, it's planned to be put in, and it was reviewed by the Landmark Commission for its compatibility, and because it still keeps with that axial linear design that was designed by Ralph Talent Stevens, they feel that it is appropriate and will fit right into the design.
Okay, great.
But it won't be subject to the regulations of the rest of the landmark.
I see. It'll be separated out.
It's the non-contributing part.
I get that, okay. And then on the other one, it was one of these where it identifies where the house is, and originally the servants' quarters or something. It says the word office, has the word, a two-story office, and was the house originally designed as an office building for the, or something? I'm just kind of curious about that, and is it used as a residence now?
It was designed as a residence, and then the Fielding Institute took a lot of the garage and servants' quarters and turned it into offices, and they're returning those back to the original use.
It's becoming back into a residential facility?
Yes.
I see, okay, great. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, why don't we have Barbara Lowenthal come on up?
Madam Mayor, members of council, Barbara Lowenthal from Harrison Design Associates were the agents for the owners. I'm here with Anthony Grumbine from our office, and Adriana Weiner and her husband Mark Jones, who are the owners of 2112 Santa Barbara Street. For a long time, this house has been used as a commercial entity, either as churches or as the fielding. So, I think if you look back on your records, and thank you, Mr. White, for bringing it up, you will find that property taxes probably have not been paid on the property for quite some time. We are restoring the property from its commercial use back to residential, that incurs a set of review and fees from the city building department that most projects do not pay. The entire house is being looked at, whether we're touching a part of it or not, because we're bringing it back to residential use, and the codes are different from commercial to residential, and we have to meet all those codes. So, the fees that our clients are paying for just that part of it alone are substantially more than most of the projects we bring through the city. We're really thrilled that we had the opportunity to work with this young couple on this project. They are literally not adding any square footage to this house, they are restoring everything in it and outside of it that they can get their hands on, that is still there, and repairing rather than remodeling and removing. So, we're restoring rather than changing, and there are parts of the garden that are just a horrible mess, and they're working with Chris Kempel, landscape architect, to bring those back to their previous glory. So, we think once they're finished, it will really be a stunning piece of property for the neighborhood and the community, and as a result, we think they dearly qualify for the exception to the Mills Act for the amount of time, effort, and expense that they're going to put into this home. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Okay, back to the council. I think when we do the motions, if we could do two separate ones, one on 16 and one on 17, just for the minute, since they're separated out, but, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is, this is great news to see this property falling into the hands of people who know the wonderful resource that it is, and the wonderful asset it is to our area, and I'm very appreciative that you're willing to take on this big project. And I would therefore move that the council adopt the resolution designating the Hodges House as a landmark.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, so this is item 16 first. Any, anything else on items, the motion on item 16 first? Ms. Mario.
Thank you. I have concern that if we make this exception to include a property that's worth more than the cap, that more properties that are over the cap might apply, and I can't foresee in the future what problems might come from that, but I guess that's your job, Mr. Limone? So, if you're keeping an eye on stuff, you know, I think that's what you were saying, because we are setting a precedent, right, by going over the cap, and then when I talked with you earlier, we talked about there's many properties in Santa Barbara that are close to 1.5 million, not where I live, but, so I guess that kind of balances that concern out for me, and I know that council passed, chose 1.5 million as the cap for some reason, but if that needs to be revisited, I mean, we are revisiting it by approving this property that's over, not by a whole lot, but, anyway, did you, did you want to say something? You were leaning forward, but I guess I'm just deliberating, saying I'm ready to vote for it, but with that, with those concerns swirling around in my head.
Councilmember Maria, what I wanted to sort of state for the record is that currently we, when we encourage and discuss these caps, we do reference that council approval is required to go beyond these caps, so it is a more difficult process. If council wants us to adjust the cap, you can direct us to adjust our guidelines to allow more. Up to this point, we tell property owners that are above 1.5 that they normally would not qualify. These property owners were aggressive and told us, there is an exception method, and that's why we took it forward to city council. So, what I'm saying to you is if you would like to have more discussions on raising the cap, we can come back and do that. At this point, we're going to forward any exception request to council in the future.
Madam Mayor, can I follow up with a question? That, I mean, so how many people have you told no to based on 1.5 million? I mean, they went away knowing there was an appeal process, right?
I would say close to, between a half dozen and a dozen up to the last three years. But again, because I thought they were solid caps that council was concerned about, yet because now that we've learned that there's not a lot of contracts, we look more closely at the ordinance, and there was a provision that Mr. Wiley crafted that allowed council to make exceptions, so we noted that, and that's why I'm telling persons now, if you want to propose it, you need the support of the Historic Landmark Commission, you also have to have a good project, and council will have to vote to approve an exception.
And if my memory serves, I'm trying to remember, the rationale behind going back to council is because it was a significant number, and we just didn't want it to be an over-the-counter kind of staff decision, that it was financially significant enough to have a public hearing about it, not to just, not to say that we don't like those, but it was just to add transparency to the project, to the process in terms of...
You're correct, Madam...
to the project, to the process in terms of the financial basis.
You're correct, Madam Mayor Snyder. I think there was concern that it might dominate with expensive properties that would come in and take advantage of a larger revenue loss and therefore we did want to sort of gear it towards the properties that would encourage more contracts.
Great. Mr. House?
Very good. That's, I mean, I appreciate that explanation because I think that really goes to the heart of it. We didn't want one or two big properties or something, you know, to wipe out the whole thing all at once. I think this is a perfect example of why this threshold is of value and listening to Ms. Lowenthal, with whom I think we all have great trust, described the willingness of the new property owners to be able to take this and do what we really mean by restoration and really get it right, to do it thoroughly and not to be, you know, messing with it, but to actually really make this back to its glory and to highlight the true historic property that it is. And I think that along with Mr. White, I just really am glad to see the Mills Act provision working, the incentive being, you know, being used the way we intended. And then lastly, it seems like we're getting another kind of benefit, even though there's a reduction for the property owner, it's probably a net increase for the city, given the kinds of uses that have been there in the past. And so we'll be getting a stream of revenue that we may not otherwise have. So I really feel very good about this and I'm happy to support the motion.
Great. Just before we vote, I just want to thank the owners. You know, usually when you look at restoring an old property, it's a nonprofit or a foundation, there's a lot of fundraising and that's exciting too, but to have private property owners wanting to restore something to its original intent as a residential place where you can call home is really quite special and we're very fortunate that you are, that you are taking the time and energy and money and significant funding to do it. So I think we all benefit from that and I just want to appreciate that. And if council member, former council member Horton is watching, I know he's smiling from ear to ear right now. He was very instrumental in the Mills Act process here. So, Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just the conversation went in the direction of finances and I just want to say that the notion that this was tax exempt for many years is important in my decision-making of just saying that's, we're having a net positive here, as Mr. House said, in cash flow out of this, out of this project, as well as all the many cultural benefits. So I hope the minutes will reflect that piece and that that's just part of what at least gives me no pause for supporting this project. It's a good idea and that's one of the ingredients that makes it a good idea.
Great. Okay, we have a motion on item 16, that's the landmark designation. We'll do that first and then, Mr. White, I'll ask you to make a motion for 17. So all in favor for item number 16? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And then, Mr. White?
I move that the council approve an exception to the Mills Act as per the staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Deb.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right. Okay, item number 18.
General Plan Safety Element Update, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the 2013 Safety Element Update to the general plan and making environmental findings pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, Ms. Limone. It's the Limone Day. Mr. Ledbetter, Mr. Limone, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, as you know, this item was continued to today's date to respond to two letters that we received and Ms. Limone will make a brief presentation to bring you up to date where we're at on those responses and the findings.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. As Mr. Ledbetter just said, we were here in November to propose the adoption of the 2013 Safety Element Update. And just as a quick refresher, again, what the document is about is public safety, community resilience, and hazard reduction policies. There are several other areas of policies throughout the 200-plus-page document and these are the different topic areas that are covered, which I went into more detail in November, so we'll just skip over today. So the public hearing was held on November 12th with the city council. A few days before that council hearing, two comment letters were submitted by two different law firms. And following the public hearing, council discussed the safety element, had several questions, and decided to continue the item to today to give staff time to respond to the written comments that were received just before the November 12th hearing. As I mentioned, the comment letters received for the November 12th meeting were from two different law firms, both representing the Empress Trust that is, owns a property, a bluff-top property on the mesa. We went into a great deal of detail in the November 12th hearing about the topics that were covered in their comment letters relating to bluff-top development, coastal act policies, and regulations, and other issues raised in those letters. Our staff report for today, this December 10th meeting, went into a great deal of detail addressing all of those comments. And then additionally, just this Friday, we received an additional letter from Hollister Embrace regarding the safety element and the proposals that staff is recommending today based on the input that we received in November. As I mentioned, the council agenda report provides detailed responses to the issues that were raised in November. And as a result, we are proposing two changes to the safety element that you can, that are most easily viewed in the council resolution. The first one adds just additional language clarifying the definition of bluff-edge policy S-25 in the safety element. And on page two of the council resolution, you can see the entirety of policy S-25 related to the structural setback from the bluff-edge for slope stability. And in underline, you could see the language that we are proposing to add that addresses some of the issues raised in the November letters. We are also proposing to add some text in the safety element related to the description of coastal bluff and coastal bluff areas. And also on page two of your council resolution, item number two shows the additional language that we are proposing to add to the safety element to provide further clarification. And again, that language is shown in strike, sorry, in underline. At the November hearing, city council members also had some additional questions that we were able to follow up with the fire department and our building and safety department. The first came from councilmember White, just questioning the city's high-fire area defensible space requirements and whether they were still appropriate. And we were able to talk with fire department staff and they actually provided us a very detailed response with a lot of additional information as to how those defensible space area requirements are established, other state law provisions and regulations that are involved. And that additional text was included in your council agenda report. We found it very helpful and useful and so are proposing to add that additional text in the safety element as well. And it's shown on page three of the council resolution in underlined text. At the meeting, councilmember White also asked a question about soft-story construction and seismic strengthening programs in the city. Based on this issue being in the news locally, both Los Angeles is looking at the issue. There was recently an article about the city of Santa Monica's efforts in this area. And we consulted with the building and safety staff and did some additional research and are proposing to add an additional implementation strategy in the safety element that would take the first step in looking at this issue, which would be an inventory of soft-story construction buildings in the city. So we would know the number and location of those buildings. That's something the city of LA is about to start to do. So we thought that was a very good step. Addressing the issue of actually strengthening these buildings is much more controversial and something that we could look at in the future, but we thought an inventory would be a good step. So on page three of the council resolution, you'll see the new strategy that we're proposing to add to the safety element to have a strategy to conduct an inventory of those types of buildings. So our recommendation today for the city council is to review and if necessary, discuss the responses to the comments that we have in the council agenda report, review the proposed changes outlined in the council resolution. And we're proposing that you adopt the revised resolution and findings incorporating the 2013 Safety Element Update into the city's general plan today. And that concludes my presentation. We're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions first, and we do have a public comment speaker. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question concerning S-25 and it's really a question of wording. The sentence that begins in the middle of that paragraph, that starts, "for example", I'm not, I don't see what that's exemplifying. If you look on page two of the resolution, S-25 is the paragraph right in the middle of the page, and let me just read this to be clear about it. Bluff-edge setbacks shall be adequate to address long-term erosion and slope stability issues. The required development setback from the bluff-edge shall be determined in accordance with the Coastal Act, the Associated California Code of Regulations provisions, such as Regulation 13577H, the Coastal Commission guidelines, and by an analysis that includes the most recent methodology used by the California Coastal Commission staff. Okay? For example, and I'm not sure what this is meant to be an example of, for example, the California Coastal Commission memorandum entitled Establishing Development Setbacks from Coastal Bluffs 2003 is provided in Appendix B of the Safety Element Technical Background Report is provided for informational purposes only. So what is, what is this exemplifying?
Mayor Schneider and councilmember Francisco, we have spent many, 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 many hours trying to write this policy and we've had a lot of input from a lot of different people. And currently, the most current methodology our experience in working with coastal commission staff in issuing coastal development permits for bluff-top properties in the city is that this 2003 memorandum contains a whole host of methodologies and approaches to analyzing on a site-specific basis bluff-top development and where the bluff-top edge would be. It looks at slope stability, soil conditions, location of existing structures. It's very, very complicated. So our attempt in this policy is to identify all the possible codes and regulations that will apply and need to be considered when we look at individual property-specific development proposals. And the current proposal by the Empress Trust is being addressed in this way, looking at the Coastal Act requirements, looking at their code of regulations, and looking at a 2003 memo that was done by their staff geologist that at that time set forth the best methodologies for looking at these types of developments. And Betty or Barbara Shelton might...
Well, in short, to answer your question, that the, this memorandum is the example of the most recent methodology that the Coastal Commission is using there. We have plenty of examples of the Coastal Commission using the methodologies listed in this memorandum to do that site-specific analysis.
Madam Mayor?
We have, Mr. Wiley, Ms. Wees.
I have some texts that I think could clarify the question raised by councilmember Francisco.
Go ahead.
The sentence could read, "For example, methodologies include the California Coastal Commission memorandum entitled Establishing Development Setbacks from Coastal Bluffs 2003, provided," and I would strike the word "is," "provided in Appendix B of the Safety Element Technical Background Report, period." And then strike, "is provided for informational purposes only."
Strike that, you're saying? Is that what you're suggesting?
That would at least be clear because right now, you're saying on the one hand, this is how we determine things and it includes something that you then end by saying, but this is only for informational purposes.
Yes, and I think it is an informational piece on methodologies. So that's the confusing part, but it is the type of methodology that is actually used. So I think leading in the sentence with "for example" helps without having to say it's informational, because it actually is more than informational, it's something that we actually follow and use.
Okay, that's clear. Thank you.
Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, everyone, beat me to the point. Having worked with the staff on this, we knew that this was an example of a methodology currently being used by the commission. So Mr. Ledbetter and Ms. Wees answered, or said what I was going to say.
Okay, well, you're all on the same page, okay. Is that, is Mr. Francisco or, yep?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. House?
On the next page is something that, I think the first time I saw this, I just thought, oh yes, of course. And now I just have second thoughts about it. And it has to do with section 4907 dot two on the next page, page three. It's the fourth full paragraph down and it talks in the middle there about vegetated roofs, which in general, we, for lots of reasons, energy savings and all that, we generally encourage. It says vegetated roofs, also known as green roofs, are not allowed in the high-fire hazard areas of the city. And that section was added based on defensible space concerns. And I just had this thought, and it would be really great at some point to have somebody in the fire department that deals with wildland fire issues, maybe take another look at this. Sod houses on a prairie, for instance, they withstand the great sweeping fires wonderfully. The sod and the vegetated roofs that comprise them, which are irrigated, which often have natural grasses and natural occurring kinds of things up there. And they have waterproof roofs that just can't, I mean, nothing can inundate through them, are sealed, they're not vulnerable, I mean, they're maybe better protected against something like a wildfire than a roof that is just architecturally, you know, with, even with tiles or something up there. So I don't know. I just realized that I have a question about it. And I know we're going to include this in here, but I wish we had somebody who could give us a little answer on that at some point. And today may not be the time, but I want to raise it because, in fact, it just seemed to me obvious, oh yeah, we don't want something up there that could burn, but if it burned and the whole structure was protected because it had that much sod on the top that protected it with a better roofing system, we may be going in the wrong direction on that. So I raised that for staff, maybe to consider even...
I know we don't have Mr. Poyet here, but if we're supposed to approve this, then today is the day, so.
Well, I mean, it could be approved and relooked at. I just want to raise it as a question.
Madam Mayor, my understanding is that that allowance or prohibition is in some official city document presently, so they're only reporting the current city standard with respect to high-fire zones and vegetated roofs. So I'm not sure if it's through the adopting codes or a internal fire department standard, but we can get back with you. I know that some applicants have questioned it and it's been reported as a absolute in terms of applicants not having a venue to get an exception to this city regulation.
In the wildland fire management plan?
I think it actually came subsequent to that.
It's in state law?
No, no, it's a city standard, it's not state law. So anyway, we'll work with the fire department, it has come up a number of times. I think it's a city standard, either set by some action of council in combination with your fire department staff.
So the wording today in here does not, would not alter current policy because what you're saying is current policy already has a prohibition of green roofs in the high-fire management area?
Yes, that's correct. This is not creating that policy, it's just restating.
Restating it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll be happy when it comes around to support this. I just think we could raise the issue so we could look at it again and if we ever did change the city's policy on it, then we might come back and take another look at this as well.
Okay. Other questions first? Okay, Mr. Monk?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Richard Monk. Point of order, before you start my clock running, one of the principal issues that we have raised is this paper that was just referenced and there's been some change apparently that's being proposed this morning, I mean, this afternoon, I've never seen.
Sure, can we clarify what that is first before you can, go ahead, Ms. Wees?
Thank you. This is a text change to the sentence on page two of the resolution, paragraph one, the middle, the paragraph with the sentence that begins "for example." It would now read, "For example, methodologies include," so that's added language, "methodologies include." And the sentence would continue, "The California Coastal Commission memorandum entitled Establishing Setback..." setback, development setbacks from coastal bluffs 2003, provided in Appendix B of the Safety Element Technical Background Report, period." And then, deleted from the sentence are the remaining words, "is provided for informational purposes only." Also deleted was the word "is" after the paren on 2003.
You put a period after "report struck is provided for informational purposes only."
Yes.
And after, "For example..."
Methodologies include, those two words.
Methodologies include. Okay.
And strike "is" after 2003.
Right. After the parentheses.
Strike "is" after what?
The parentheses 2003. Just strike the word "is."
All right. I don't mean all right that I agree, but I understand.
Okay, go ahead with your comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, how many minutes do I have?
Well, we'll start with two and see how you do, but if you could keep it concise, I would appreciate it.
I'm Richard Monk. I represent Imprice Trust along with my co-council attorney, Steve Kaufman. We incorporate by reference our previous written and oral comments that both Mr. Kaufman and I have delivered, as well as Dahl and Associates regarding the safety element. The agenda report and the resolution both reference unspecified state regulations and unspecified guidelines regarding required development setbacks from the bluff edge and the language, the most recent methodology that was just changed. And the resolution says that the factors for determining bluff edge, slope stability, long-term bluff retreat, development setbacks shall be done on a case-by-case basis. But the resolution's reference to Coastal Commission guidelines is ambiguous, because, for example, does it mean the 1977 to 1981 iterations of the Coastal Commission's adopted geologic stability guidelines? Or does it mean the Coastal Commission's unadopted LCP guidance document, which is the Mark Johnson report? Or does it mean something entirely different? Also, the reference to the methodology is ambiguous because it doesn't identify what the most recent methodology is. Well, we've just learned that they have identified it as being the Mark Johnson paper. We requested minor revisions to the resolution as set forth in Exhibit 1 to our December 6 letter, and the recommended additions were underlined and deletions were stricken. And we believe that this would achieve some clarification of what the applicable standards are. And we request that council make those changes and also attach Code of Regulations, Section 13577, subsection H, in its entirety to the resolution, rather than the mere reference to it in Exhibit 2, as set forth in Exhibit 2 to our letter. We've attached the entire regulation. Because that is the applicable legal standard for definition and criteria for determining location of a coastal bluff in the coastal zone. The Mark Johnson paper, the conference paper, which they've now identified as being the current methodology, has never been adopted by the Coastal Commission. It's not part of the California Code of Regulations. It's not part of the coastal regulations. It's a mere staff opinion, as any conference paper would be. I understand that Coastal Commission staff tries to employ that wherever they can. But we had a Coastal Commission land use consultant who specializes in this type of work make a review of all the cities and other counties throughout the state and examine their general plan safety elements. In some cases, they're called public safety elements or environmental safety elements rather than safety elements. And that review confirms that none of these other jurisdictions include Mark Johnson's conference paper, as the city's proposing to do here. Nor do they even reference the paper in those elements. However, about 10 of the safety elements that were examined or general plans in other parts do reference or include the Coastal Commission adopted, actual adopted, 1977 to 1981 geologic stability guidelines, which is something that you ought to include. And about 30 of them incorporate language, either verbatim or generally, which follows the Coastal Commission's adopted bluff definition in Code of Regulations 13577-H, which we're asking you to attach. So we repeat our request that Mr. Johnson's conference paper, although eloquently written and probably relied upon by coastal staff, simply does not belong in your safety element of your general plan.
Okay.
And that concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we ask you to please adopt the Exhibits 2 to our letter.
Okay. Mr. Wiley, did you have a question? Go right ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Monk, yeah. What do you, what is your sense of the effect of Mr. Johnson's paper to, on this issue? That's what you're wanting out of this conversation, of this resolution?
What are the reasons that I want it out?
Yeah, what is the...
The reasons I want it out is that it's a mere opinion of a coastal staff member that has never been adopted formally by the California Coastal Commission. Understand that when the Coastal Commission acts, the staff makes its recommendations. Oftentimes, they go along with that recommendation, just like oftentimes you do. Sometimes, they don't. And sometimes, they overrule the memorandum upon which the staff is relying. Now, I think it's interesting and noteworthy that that conference paper has never found its way into the California Code of Regulations, nor has it been formally adopted by the California Coastal Commission. And so I submit to you that it stands as mere opinion of a staff member, which should not be incorporated into your general plan. I wrote a law review article on exclusive bargaining in the NORB when I was in law school that I thought was well-written, but I wouldn't recommend that Mr. Armstrong put it in your employee manual. So, you know, it's never been adopted, and it really doesn't belong there.
Okay. Thank you.
And I appreciate hearing our council's assessment of that and how that piece enters into this resolution.
Councilmember White, on that last point, and I think this is clear now that we've talked about it, we're not incorporating this memorandum, the Coastal Commission Staff Geologist memorandum, into our safety element. We're merely referring to it as an example of a methodology, and in fact, the current methodology being used by the Coastal Commission. It's a piece of information. And we're not saying that that's the only piece of information. We're not saying that's how we will, as a staff, define a coastal bluff when we're looking at a permit that involves a coastal bluff or a permit application. And beyond that, Mr. Monk makes this point, that we merely refer to one of the regulations, the regulations that defines coastal bluff, 13577. And we don't actually incorporate the whole text of 13577 into our safety element. I just don't know that that's necessary or even makes a whole lot of sense. For example, we refer to the Coastal Act in the same sentence, but we don't copy the entire Coastal Act and drop it into our safety element. As I see it, the bottom line here is that there is no denying, from a legal standpoint, that whether it's our safety element or a coastal development application, coastal development permit application must be approached, must be reviewed in the context of the Coastal Act, and then in the context of the California Code of Regulation, Coastal Act Regulations adopted by the Commission. There's just no denying that. And we can refer to a staff memorandum, for example, but in terms of a hierarchy of what we're required to look at is the Coastal Act and the regulations. And whether we say it or not, that's a legal fact.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Francisco?
So, Mr. Wiley, if I understand you, what you're saying then is that in the case, in the instance of this property or any other property that was applying for development on a coastal bluff area, that the determination would be made according to the Coastal Act and according to whatever else the Coastal Commission has adopted, as opposed to... I'm not exactly sure what the line is there.
That's correct. Councilmember Francisco, clearly, the Coastal Act is state law, and that's controlling. In fact, it's by and large an initiative measure, and so in fact, it can't even be changed by the state legislature as an initiative measure. So that's a given in a way that's... Then, like most big, major state laws, it has administrative regulations. And this is true of state and federal government. You take a complex statutory scheme, and then the actual agency that has to apply that statutory scheme adopts, officially adopts, regulations. In California, they're called the California Code of Regulations. For federal statutes, they're called the Code of Federal Regulations, adopted through the federal register process. So that's like the second priority in terms of a statutory scheme. For all practical purposes, that's the law, and that's what you've got to follow. But I think really what we may be arguing over here are things that are below regulations, and there are administrative practices that have been written up and maybe approved at an administrative level, in this case, perhaps by the executive director of the Coastal Commission, but not necessarily by the Commission itself. Or even administrative practices that have been written up that, in this case, the Coastal Commission staff feels are entirely consistent with the Coastal Act and the regulations. And until someone tells, someone being a court, tells the Coastal Commission that those administrative practices are somehow inconsistent with the law, they help administer the Coastal Act. I hope I'm answering your question. Maybe my answer is, I've read Mr. Monk's most recent letter several times, and the reason I read it several times was I just didn't see a substantive problem with the language we... I see he wants to change it, but I don't see any substance in the desire for a change or in the requested change of, for example, just merely incorporating the text of the regulation into the plan isn't necessary.
So if I understand you, then what you're saying is, there's the state law, there are regulations that have been adopted by the Coastal Commission. There are also administrative practices that perhaps haven't been challenged legally, but could be challenged perhaps at some time in the future, and that we look at all of those things in making a determination about whether to grant a local coastal development permit?
That's correct. And just to be clear, you couldn't, an individual couldn't necessarily, I think, mount just a general legal challenge to a written administrative practice. They would actually have to have a real, what the law calls a case or controversy. They would have to have an application that, for example, maybe was denied, or they felt improperly conditioned because of an administrative practice. And I mention that because apparently, in this case, this is about a particular property owner, a particular property who is concerned, in theory, that in the future, somehow his application will be improperly handled because of what the safety element. And I don't know, that just seems very speculative at this point. And there doesn't seem to be a basis in what it is that we're adopting here in the safety element. I mean, I just don't see somehow that we're doing something inappropriate in the language of the safety element in terms of the Coastal Act.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. House?
Just to really understand this, and I appreciate these questions. So as I read this, "Structural setback from the bluff edge for slope stability" is the title of it. And then it says the intent, "Bluff edge setback shall be adequate to address long-term erosion and slope stability issues." So that seems pretty clear to me. And then it talks about the required development setback and "shall be determined." And by whom is that, by whom are they determined?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember House?
I mean, it starts with the staff member. And then, as you know, and this is typical, in Santa Barbara, coastal development permits are decided by the planning commission. So then, if the staff member determination is in front of the planning commission in terms of the staff report, the commission either disagrees with it or agrees with it, that's appealable to the city council, the application of these things. And again, the council either agrees or disagrees with the interpretation. And then, in this case, it would be appealable to the Coastal Commission as well. And this would all occur, have to occur, before anyone could file a legal challenge to the application of the Coastal Act, because ultimately, this gets decided by judges.
Okay, got it. And since, because it says in the last sentence, "Modifications to the prescribed setback calculation methodology and setbacks may be approved by the city council to reflect site-specific geological conditions." So in fact, the city council could, because there's something special about that particular place, could have something very specific to that. Okay.
Just to be clear, it says "city," but we mean the generic, the city's the final decider, city council's the final decider around here, you know?
Oh, I see, I get it. Okay. And then, the last question is, "The prescribed setback calculation methodology," those words right there. So if I were a staff person going through a review of a particular property, I'm guessing there's some outline as to what, or something, as to what procedure they're going to apply to making that determination and what the references are or something. Is that true? And I mean, is there a prescribed setback calculation methodology for staff to start that process Mr. Wiley's talking about?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Councilmember House. Staff does this analysis, but supported by professionals in the field of geologic and slope stability and engineering, environmental engineering. So this is, it's not like a zoning standard that we can measure a setback. So this methodology and assessment from which we make our recommendations, and ultimately the planning commissioner, city council decides, is based on technical expertise in these fields. So if you read our Certified Local Coastal Plan, which the Coastal Commission certified and found consistent with the Coastal Act, there is a methodology that was developed in the early '80s to assess slope stability and erosion hazard and abatement of hazardous situations with new construction and buildings and such. So that methodology lays out that you get an engineering geologist, and they consider the slope of the land and its geographic and topographic features. And then, at the end of that methodology, it has a sentence that says, "Each site shall be considered for site-specific analysis." So the current local coastal plan has an example of a methodology within it, and it already has an allowance for site-specific. So this policy is consistent with our current Certified Local Coastal Plan. The guidelines that Mr. Monk referenced, the 1977 to 1981, I think the staff will remember, I pulled that out of my coastal book the other day when we were meeting. It's, you know, font Courier, size eight, you know, it's been Xerox many, many times. And it's a good document. And we have used that document, as do professionals, again, in the engineering field. But more recently, we have been relying on this 2003 memorandum, as, again, these developments along coastal bluffs are in the appeal jurisdiction, and we coordinate with the Coastal Commission staff. We don't want to have a local review and have a property owner go through an EIR. It's not uncommon that these projects also will have quite a bit of public review, and other people in the community will be reading these technical reports. So anyway, that's an awful lot of work, and the Coastal Commission staff has asked, and we think it makes good sense for property owners, to be in communication with the Coastal Commission and following technical methodologies that they, too, are going to rely upon when they make a recommendation to the California Coastal Commission in the event that the project's appealed. And that very type of conversation is going on for this project that Mr. Monk represents. So we are in conversations with Coastal Commission staff. They are aware that we're using this methodology.
Thank you, Betty. And what about the 75-year, that, when I was on planning commission...
Yes.
We referenced that over and over again. From the top of the bluff, then there was this 75-year line that was somehow technically figured out.
This is how.
This is what we're talking about.
Yes.
Thank you.
White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, on this topic, what I was even asking Mr. Monk about and our own council was, is this wording going to somehow sabotage this project at this point? And I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing that we're still going to be able to go forward with this project and judge it severely, maybe not severely, but at least scrutinize it very carefully. And that's, of course, and I know that Mr. Monk expects that, and that's what it's going through. So I'm not seeing how the wording that's proposed here is harmful to that project unfairly, shall we say. And then also, I want to say that on the, both on the fire protection and the soft-story components, I... I appreciate that additional wording was put in there. I think it's good cautionary material. So thank you, staff, for that. I hope that my colleagues agree with it.
Okay, we can, does anyone have a motion or any other questions or comments on the item?
And...
Go ahead, Mr. White.
I guess Mr. House is sort of starting to, you know,
He's letting you...
Push us, push us onto our own here, and I would move, Madam Mayor, that council approve the, adopt the resolution for, that is the 2013 safety element update per staff recommendation.
And...
And with the changes as to the wording as, first of all, initiated by Mr. Francisco.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Francisco.
Obviously, I've read Mr. Monk's letters, and I take, I take these things very seriously. I think, as I understand this now, with the clarification to the language in S-25, and my understanding, both from staff and from Mr. Wiley, about how these projects go through the process, I don't think anything that we're doing today in adopting this safety element has any material influence on how that process would go. That's my understanding, and that's part of the reason. I mean, obviously, there are other reasons that I'm supporting adopting the safety element, but that is, that's my understanding. Just wanted to make that clear.
I think it was a good discussion to have, so I appreciate that, and Mr. Monk, appreciate you bringing these issues up. So as this project comes, that project comes forward, obviously, we'll be looking at these issues very carefully. Any other comments? Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Committee assignment reports. Ms. Murillo?
Thank you. I attended the Milpus Action Task Force meeting last week, and the group is having serious discussions about an alcohol sales ordinance, and part of it was triggered by the new 7-Eleven coming in and concerns about alcohol consumption in the Milpus corridor. And the group is still keeping an eye on how Casa Esperanza's new sobriety rules may impact conditions on the street. And I promised, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I took really good notes. I think there was one more thing, but I might bring it up next, next week if I find my notes. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the water commission meeting yesterday, and the number of items, basically, the timber of that meeting is definitely one of concern about the lack of rainfall, the lack, just that we're heading into a constrained water supply situation, and things, elements such as, there's even an effort now sort of underway, as I understand it, to look for purchasing some water from the rice farmers in the Sacramento Valley. So these things are starting to get on staff and the water commission's radar. They're certainly on mine as well. There were conversations about our groundwater basins, which I heard some concerning information about our Foothill Basin, which I was unaware of, that that basin is further down than I could imagine at this point of our water cycle. I'm dismayed, and I'm going to be asking to get some more information about that. But anyway, so we're all looking worldly at the sky, and we're at half, we're at 50% of average rainfall today. And just looking out there, it's, the forecast is for clear skies or not too much rain. So it's getting to be a worrisome time.
Mr. House?
I just really briefly, I attended the Downtown Organization Board Meeting this morning, which I do every month, on behalf of the city council, my last one, by the way. It was kind of nice to say thank you to them and appreciate them, but certainly to appreciate Georgette, her last name's Friedman, right, Georgette from the Downtown Organization, who did just a remarkable job on that parade, the holiday parade, and how much fun that was. And it's just that, and of course, the cruise ship work that she's been doing and coordinating all that effort, just good to see her getting appreciated for all that work. Last week, I attended the board meeting for the, for the Community Action Commission on Wednesday night, and looked at some really good future planning that the organization is doing and building contingencies into the system to be resilient with regards to the funding issues that I've mentioned over and again here. I think the message that I'm, wanted to continue to relay through the city council is that these big budget things that happen in Washington, DC have real-life human impacts, and I've mentioned it every time I've made this kind of report. That board is keenly aware of real-life seniors. They get food through our programs, and the kids in Head Start and youth in the pregnancy prevention programs and things like that that are directly affected when any number of them get cut from a program. Lastly, on that same topic, we do food distribution in city facilities, and one of the issues that comes up, we do contribute through community development grant funds and other funding sources from the city, but we also charge rents for those facilities to distribute food, free food, to our seniors. And it's one of the things that perhaps in a new year, when you're looking at this, the council may want to really reconsider that. Each of the cities is having a chance to take a look at why they would be charging rent for free food to be distributed to the seniors of the community, and I think that that may be at odds with a real intent there. So I bring that up for future conversation and really appreciate that board for how hard they work on addressing poverty in our county.
And I want to acknowledge the Parks and Rec Department for a fabulous 90th birthday party. Mr. House and I were there at the very beginning and wish Larry Crandella happy 90th birthday. He was the emcee for so long, and now he's one of the award, you know, the honorees. And then also the waterfront department on Sunday for their, working out the parade of lights, which was always really fun and very imaginative rock and roll theme on a boat. So lots of bands and screaming, safely, of course, with a lot of light. So it was a lot of fun. Okay. With that, we already did item 19, so if you could read item 20.
Conference with labor negotiator.
Okay, and we won't have anything to report out of there, so we'll adjourn from closed session, and we'll see you next week.